Mission for May thirteenth, the order. And I'll ask Stuart to please call the board.
Chris Crowley.
Here.
Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Koss.
Present.
Vivian Diggs.
Yeah.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
Adi Wilkins Corey.
Yeah.
We have a quorum and perfect attendance.
Thank you. If we do an invocation, do we do the pledge of allegiance? If you don't mind, Charles, you do pledge of allegiance. I just do the invocation if you don't mind. I thought I'd thank you this day for this county. This rural area, we pray that we are doing your will and being under your guidance. We pray for the citizens of this county and its leaders. In Jesus' name I pray amen.
Good evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice or evil.
Okay, I know that Steph Ross has been busy. He trusts, trusts everybody else is.
He's not gonna hurt you.
Yeah. So, um, um, move for approval of the agenda at this time.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I have it. Approval of the minutes for tonight. So agenda. You're a heavy lady tonight.
Don't move.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, any comments from the commission? Any comment from the commissions? Okay, all right. Staff, any comments?
Um, yeah, the date I proposed for the June meeting will not work because we, there's an Economic Development Commission meeting, so uh, either in the end of the meeting, before the meeting though, we need to determine what the June date is. And I, I believe Mr. Cost wants to modify the July date, so we'll have to just, uh, we want to get that nailed down tonight, but it won't be the seventeenth in June because can't have two meetings at the same time in the same room.
Okay.
Can't have two meetings at the same time.
Well, what? Is that a rule? That's your rule.
That's not my rule. That's what I have been told. I think it's a limiting citizen opportunities to participate is the problem with that. So we want to maximize the amount of opportunities citizens can engage.
All right, any comments from the community?
That was the first thing I said before.
Okay, all right. Since we have no public hearings tonight, we'll go right to our work session. Is that all right with you Stuart?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion of comprehensive plan and revisions. Okay. All right. Going to turn it to Stuart.
Mr. Cost.
Cost. Okay.
Um, since two of our members were not here last time, as we agreed, we will go back through it line by line now so that they have the full benefit. I read your emails.
I read them. I'm good.
Um, we are making very good progress. Uh, here's my big picture view of the world. Uh, we, depending on how many chapters we can get through tonight, um, and we only have two that we can't do tonight. Um, we could finish those two next month, June. And with the modifications that would be purely technical at that point, we could actually have a public hearing and final approval at the July meeting if you're so fine. If you want to wait till Christmas, that's another matter. But, uh, my work will be done, uh, within the next few days after we conclude uh, our work, uh, the what's now Appendix A, what was Chapter Two. Um, so you've received everything that has been, uh, updated so far. The one thing you have not received is Chapter Three. Uh, Stuart wanted to get Philip Marsden involved in the review of that since it's water quality and just be back. Uh, involved, so we'll get that taken care of and up to you as soon as possible. The other thing that you do not yet have is Appendix A, which again is Chapter Two. Uh, and the reason is that, um, that one will have changes all dependent on what happens in the other four chapters. So we have to do that one last, please. That's my thinking all along. Um, so for tonight, um, I would like to start literally at the beginning with the preamble. You will have already received that preamble only has two big changes. They're both rhetorical, they're not substantive. Content perspective, after that, it's up to you how in detail we get in terms of the reviews of chapters one, two, and four, if we get to those. Um, Stuart has reviewed them all. Uh, he made some suggestions. He also set me straight on something here that was quite helpful. As I said in our last meeting, or yeah, the last meeting, the word should to me triggered that it was a recommendation. So I began focusing on those as we need to call them out. Well, it turns out that most of the shoulds refer to policy that's already in place. And so rather than call them out as recommendations, which was the confusion I had when I read it the first time, we did things like should continue to be so that it's clear it is policy and there's nothing earth shattering here. So you will see a lot of modifications in the first, in the, in Chapter One and Two in which we use the phrase should continue to or continue to be something like that. That will actually be the bulk of the changes again to, to, to eliminate a lot of the, uh, confusion about is this something new or not? So that being said, um, how you wish to proceed from this point on, uh, we already approved the minor change.
Yeah, this is version three. I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to just look at your.
Do you have version two? Version?
Yeah, I've got, I've got all of them.
Okay.
I, I hope I have all of them.
Uh, anyway, so these are all minor change. These are the first, those are the changes Garfield loves so much. For we, uh, took out the word, actually we added the word Northumberland here.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Doc. This is not the right version.
Well, I've got version one, version two, and version three, which Eli.
That's not the right version. Okay, we will skip version, we will skip the preamble tonight. Then, yeah. All right, sorry about that folks. Let's go to Chapter One. Um, again, how fast we go here, I, I, some of you may have read all these things already. You don't want to go through it again. It's up to you. What's the pleasure of the growth?
I've read them all. Uh, I don't have any substantive comments. Except I think the document of chapters we've reviewed so far is far better laid out and noticeably more readable. And so my inclination would be to approve the chapter in its entirety.
Don't move.
Comments?
Better be seconded, boy.
Yeah. There's a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, are there any comments? Comments? You're all happy? Okay, y'all happy? Let's move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right.
Go to Chapter Two.
Chapter Two.
Yeah, we have a public hearing tonight.
Well, Chapter Two is the issues and goals.
Oh, oh, you're right, so.
So three?
Yeah.
And my review.
So we're not doing Chapter Two, we're doing Chapter Three.
This is, this was Chapter.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so for those of you who are confused about the order, because we talked about this last time, this graphic shows what, where every. Um, Patrick, you had a good go at this one as well.
I again thought the layout was an improvement, was far more readable. And there's no, nothing substantive that I would change in that chapter.
Um, there is one, Stuart, just go down to where the village, village guidelines. This isn't a substantive change at all, but in terms of readability. So all of these words that follow, uh, that section, agriculture. We can do that one, let's do that one. So there's a number of places again where the word should appears a lot. And rather than change all those words, I, I created this, uh, blue thing, I think it's blue, it is in the original, that calls out this section about agriculture and forest, forest land guidelines, they are as follows. I do that for all of these parts at the beginning here, so that there, here we got rural uplands and so on. And then when we get down to the villages, there's a call out section just like that for all of the villages. So it sort of stands out off the page a little bit more. And again, it, it doesn't lead to the conclusion, oh, this is all new stuff. This is in fact all. So here's Calio. So, uh, the word did not. Uh, and this one has, the thing is a varying action.
Yeah, it's the last page.
Okay, so we did have the solar stuff on, so. As Patrick said, there wasn't a lot of substantive change here, so.
Well, I, I do have a comment about Lotsburg. Um, one of the add additions from the Economic Development Commission is to promote the addition of more light industry and manufacturing. While we do need light industry and manufacturing in the county, Lotsburg is not a, uh, um, doesn't have a, a commercial hub. It's just a support area. And the support areas for businesses that support the local residents, which means there's a mix of residences and businesses there. So I'm just not sure Lotsburg, I, I think that's a good statement. And perhaps maybe in other villages. But I'm much not sure if light manufacturing and industry is appropriate for the support area because the support area, we can quickly look at that. Um.
And that was, uh, Maurice's suggestion. I'm more than happy if he's willing, if he agrees, move it to a combination of Calio and Burgess. That would probably make more.
Well, the, the reason that I brought it up is because at one time, there were some businesses in Mark. Machine shop, for example, and now there's a place across the river from singing, said in the front of the retail store, it's very compact, it's tiny factor. Or furniture. The point is that the way this thing reached, we closed the door on both of them, Tom, in Lotsburg.
Well, if y'all want to change the support area for Lotsburg into a, you know, a, a commercial hub, that's fine. I, I'm just trying to be consistent with what is written before, and it says, the support areas intended to be zoned permit location of small general businesses and areas now zoned agricultural residential general. Support areas are, uh, that's not like, uh. Anyway, I, I just thought of bringing it up. I'm, I'm not, it's not going to bother me if, if y'all think it's okay. I just thought I would bring it up, but I didn't think it was very consistent with the support area.
He did the permitting process for that furniture repair shop.
Mm-hmm.
It, it shipped online, there was previous one zoned agricultural.
All of Lotsburg is zoned agricultural.
Right. Right, so. I don't know if it makes much of a difference. We're not asked here for rezoning. Or, you know, hey, whoever use, sets up a business there is going to get, have to get a conditional use permit, correct?
Unless it's a business, unless it's agriculture related business, I mean, there's certain things that would not need one, but majority, yes, majority would need a conditional use permit. And I, I mean, I, I, I just don't think it, the, the concept of a support area, I just don't think manufacturer fits that, but that's my opinion and may not be the opinion of everyone, everyone else.
It would be a conditional use and would have to get a, uh, some sort of a conditional use permit with conditions undoubtedly. Just don't see how it makes any difference.
Could we resign the furniture store?
No.
Just for conditional use, just a hub.
Um, as I said, I, to, Stuart raised that with me previously, and I said, I wanted to bring it up for this discussion which we're having. I'm perfectly fine with moving that particular line item or item to, uh, Calio and Burgess instead. If you want to see development of a greater scale of Lotsburg, that's fine. It's just that the way we're structuring this is not consistent, Stuart, right in that regard. Did you have an issue with any, because you didn't raise that issue in Calio or Burgess? You've singled out.
They already seem to be suited. So, um, if you were to watch an evolution over time, you would see the villages grow tentacles along the main traffic lines towards each other. And if you lop off some of the business opportunities, the business models before that happens, then it's more likely to not happen.
But this is about encouraging it and ideally because of the way the traffic looks and so forth, we'd probably be better off with Cal and Burgess.
And that extension of the villages is called sprawl. I mean, the villages are, are supposed to be the centers, center, we're supposed to center the business that grows in these areas so the remainder of the county is, does not have businesses. I mean, that's the whole plan, is village. So Casino Village is where the infrastructure is. Huh?
Think Eastville would be more appropriate, Lotsburg. Because you got a lot of stuff.
Well, neither have the sewers, so, you know, I, I, I don't. It's up to you all. I, I've just brought that up. You all make a decision. I'm fine, however you all want to go with it.
Let me just stop for a moment. Is anybody else online? Okay, all right. Now, so support areas, for your definition of support area, like Lotsburg, why Comocote, am I correct?
Yeah, well, all, all of them have a support areas, but most of them have a commercial hub and then support areas around. Uh, but Lotsburg is the only village, well, no, I think Lillian also is just a support area as well. Uh, let's see. Yeah, Wacomka Church is just a support area, of course. It's got Dollar General and a machine shop and, uh, gravel and all the rest. I, I, if y'all are okay with it, I mean, I don't want to throw a wrench in the works.
So what, what, what are we saying? We're saying that we, we're changing the definition now for Lotsburg area.
Well, no, we're just adding an additional, um, um, policy where I'm, I've got lost here. I apologize. Ah, yeah, Lotsburg.
So what we're trying to do is nudge people in the direction of maybe Calio, Eastville, Burgess, Burgess. Uh, but it doesn't prohibit anybody from putting a business, else we need business.
No, no.
And if, if that's a fit for the time being, but.
The, the, the way the plan is laid out, correct me if I'm wrong, the two major business hubs are supposed to be Burgess, Calio. And, you know, Burgess doesn't have sewer, so maybe Calio is, but Burgess is centrally located, so. But those, that's where we want majority of the growth and it's okay in the other villages, but that's the way the plan's set up now, and that doesn't mean that's how it has to be. If y'all want to change it, you know, that's up to y'all.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like to just comment that, um, if you are going to want or move a business to Northumberland County, those pre-existing economic conditions or are going to pretty much be determinative of where you site. I don't think anything we say in this plan is going to persuade somebody to move a business to one place or another.
Right.
What I would like to do is build as much flexibility into the plan as possible.
Yeah.
To give a business or prospective business, where, you know, wherever you want to be will support you. That's why I would like to keep the language as is with respect to lots.
Makes sense. All right. Okay, comments?
I agree. If it's driving for consistency.
Is that, so we're going, okay, if you're going to keep it like it is, motion? Don't move. Second?
Second.
Now, I need clarification on that. Keep it like it is. Does that mean leave that statement out or leave that statement in? Like it is with revision or like it is for the revision?
Like it is before the revision?
Like it was and as John wrote it. So like it is in this document.
As that read, that number five, that we have a fifth goal in Lotsburg.
Yeah.
John, stand there.
Patrick's motion is to leave it worded as it is here as opposed to taking it out.
But the difference being one versus the other is what?
Just that line.
Well, one doesn't have number five, which says promote the addition from, of more light industry and manufacturing.
Error in that, Charlie.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
So that, that line stays. Correct.
But only for Lotsburg.
So far, yeah, that, right at this moment, that's the only place that appears. Now, now, who's second? I'm sorry, I was.
I'm second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, that was the only other issue.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, there was one more thing that was down here. I saw something about Main Street, but yeah, that's, uh, Eastville. Um, and Main Street is actually a program, but I'm pretty sure it's cut now. Uh, it used to be a program.
But the fund, then issue, they will be having, honestly.
But yeah, I think that we don't think I have.
I can hear that. What was that?
There are apparently funds floating around for the Main Street project in Eastville. But since the project was dissolved, what, a year ago?
Um, it, it expended all of its funding for that year.
Okay.
The next, the next year it is, they're perspective.
So it will be revived in twenty seconds. Good.
If, if there's a D H C D.
Right.
Exactly.
We would like to see them continue, and it looks like they will.
Um, another thing I had issues with was Village. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if this number five. Well, I didn't get it. I mean, I, I, you can look and see I've got this is. This was one of the problems about getting, having, uh, consistency and being able to keep track of what gets.
So the point Stuart was going to make, go back to the word in there, there, yeah. One suggestion Maurice made was listed in number five. I made the mistake of copying his suggestion into the village instead of, was it Lillian? Where was, was it Lillian? Uh, the version I think I sent you actually did that. I corrected it before I sent it out, but I must not have.
Well, you understand Lotsburg.
Correct.
I, I didn't, when you sent it out to the commission, I didn't download them because I thought they were the same as what we had.
So we, that was the problem. I sent you guys the corrected version. He didn't think it changed what it seemed. So other than the version you have is correct and number five was then in Lillian, not in, uh, the village. So that's. So what you have is correct, anyway. Um, anything else?
Well, I, I, I had a question about the infrastructure profile.
That is, that is purely, what would it look like if we had to do? That's all that is.
Well, what would it look like if what?
What is, what would it look like if we had to do other things for that in that village? What if it grew? What would we have to do? That's all that says.
And, and that is for Village?
No, that is not for Village. That is for Lily.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So Waverly Road and.
Village is pretty well decked out.
Well, it's also half in Richmond County, so that's why I was wondering why we're even talking about Village. But I'm sorry, both of those supposed to go with, okay, that, that explained, that helped, yeah.
Well, other than these states, uh, again, it's a, it's a version control issue we have here, um, it is that you saw.
So those two really are going to be moved out of there anyway, correct?
These two right here, the two that we just went through, or are going to be moved to Lily and, and, uh, Village respectable, right?
Oh, Village is.
Both go to Lily.
Yeah, both of those go to Lily. Yeah. It's one page up. Right here, so.
Oh, that is.
It, it's on the other side of the map. I mean, I can understand, you go past Lillian, you think you're talking about Lillian, but actually you talked about Lillian before the map, so. It's understandable, so that's all good.
Other than that, anything else you want to look at here? Chapter Two.
Well, I would move that we approve the chapter two, so get to the changes we discussed.
Is there a second? Second? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
After four. New chapter, well, chapter, they're the same chapter, right?
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm not sure if the right ones are on, but.
That's what you said, it's longer.
Um. Again, I don't know, there's a few things you probably need to discuss, um. Funny, when I was reading this thing, it, it spelled out, it wasn't in a text box, functional classification of roads within the original version, and then that phrase was never used again except for graphics. So I had to make some modifications. Stuart corrected that for me, what, what's these major roads are as well, so that's in there. Uh, that was all due to, I said, I was, I said, I was, there were these things, so worth calling out, let's fill it out. Call a label now, uh. And then call out recommendations here, so. Right now, but we've wiped the final version, all the stuff, this is all text that was already in there. I just put in a recommendation box. There's some free format that I don't need to have, I want to take out all that stuff that's been. There was, this is a substantive change at all. In Chapter One, there was this recommendation, and as I said, Chapter One is not about recommendations, it is a description of the status quo. So anything vaguely resembling a recommendation, move from Chapter One. This particular one, which is definitely improve access for inland residents now in the public facilities area, because it's about recreation. And it's been removed from Chapter One. Water trails, so forth, about kayaking, kayak going, and there's a recommendation there that Maurice and I looked out. Uh, and recommendations that are partial, take it from the textbook, uh, should consider ways to expand the number of public beaches, surplus land acquisition, services, grants that have been being taken. How many should plan to have a public park oriented for children and young adults and so on and so forth? The number of things in here above the need for more facilities, tennis courts and so forth. Those are all sort of called out a little bit more.
Well, Jim Logue will be very happy with that.
The original text that basketball is played almost amongst all communities by, how it didn't say that, said nearly, this is another popular activity amongst youth. Basketball is played by people of all ages, right Alan? You're, you're young still, yeah.
Some was, without coronary, coronary risk. You never do.
We, we straightened that out, go ahead.
Didn't include title of all.
Uh, this preamble here, all of the words that are used in that first chapters are, first paragraphs are actually in the appropriate place later on. That's one of them. We're updated this full enrollment, uh, this block of blackout here, those are words almost verbatim, chapter one, they weren't painted here. But add, and looking at the maps in terms of the words, the map stories.
No way.
And again, this is the recommendations are taken verbatim from what was there. This is a new recommendation. The county board of supervisors should work with B C O, B C U or other Virginia-based healthcare providers. Ban the availability of urgent care facilities. That seems like a good thing.
I can't see how anybody would argue with that.
Like that, okay. There'll be a new block at the end.
Do you wanna talk about that or not?
So one of the recommendations in here was kind of surprising, but I don't know why to say it, or, um, is the objective should be to establish a board, just looking at the cross out here. For affordable housing for those who live in Northern County, in particular, the county should provide guidance, research and incentives, non-profit, more profit and so forth. Uh, those are, um, someplace where it's got to be, uh, tax breaks, right?
Yeah, that's, that was up here. That's, that's now.
Okay.
Uh, I think this is covering up some of the language and it's a PDF, so I think if you're looking for the language that's in here, I think it's hidden behind the text box. If, if it doesn't match, I, I, I would assume that it's, it's basically the same sort of stuff.
Okay.
But I mean, I've got, I think I've got the word document too, if you wanna go there.
There provision in the old version that basically says the county should provide tax, their tax breaks. For elderly, elderly people.
Right.
Um, having worked in social services, at least in another state, that was always a state function. That it's not necessarily, at least in Michigan, it was not a county function to provide tax breaks, uh, for poor people. Virginia may be tired, I was surprised to see that.
I fairly certain that the amount of tax relief the county itself would grant. Uh, would be minuscule relative to what the state or the federal government can do. Um, what occurred to me when reading that is we have a fairly large amount of land that has reverted to the, uh, county. Would, I wonder if we could use any of that for potential for low income housing development. And I just don't know, that's, they're aware, I went off of rails.
The, uh, the, the very last section I've added actually talks about surplus property because there are lands, something like that there. Or maybe even sale of that land to support, uh, tax reduction.
Well, you could, you could do it in a lot of different ways, you know, one is you could, uh, have some sort of cap, local tax reduction plan, but that's really not a significant enough benefit to draw in and of itself, draw anybody in. However, you, you had a reduction, a reduction in cost of land acquisition. That would be, would make developers' lives light up.
Well, I, in, in thinking about previous projects come before us and the conditional use permits. Um, the multi-unit on, um, Lowmore Up Road, it, it's sort of out of booties. And, you know, I, I, I was thinking that, I don't know if y'all wanna have this discussion or not, but perhaps we want more multi-units in the villages where there's food and services and things like that, and where people of low income may not have a vehicle or only have one vehicle for the whole, whole family and they have to share it. That it would be easier to get some of those, uh, sustenance, uh, nearby as opposed to being, say, out in Donovan Road.
That sort of begs the question of how many own any property in villages or support areas?
Not that I know, not that, I mean, we went through them all and I don't recall. Next, next to the, very fragrant, the site in the center.
You lived and read, you'll have to be fragrant too.
Um, when, when Mr. Cost asked about the tax, uh, uh, reduction. I can't remember if it was two or three or four board meetings ago, but, uh, board supervisors ask, um, well, well, basically it was, it was stated that Todd Thomas provides up to six hundred dollars in tax relief. For, uh, low income elderly people that have no means and things of that nature. And, um, one of the board members asked, is, is that enough? And Todd mentioned that he contacted all the neighboring counties and that goes on par with what other counties do. The other thing Todd mentioned was that this six hundred dollar up to, it's not, not everybody gets six hundred dollars, but that's the maximum amount. And that, uh, um, that, that they, it's not meant to pay all of their taxes. It is assistance to ease the burden, but it's not a, a tax write-off to all their taxes. It's just something to help them a little bit.
We do that now?
Yes, we do. And so considering we have a lot of elderly people here and, and some peoples uh, didn't save enough for retirement, you know, I, I, I mean, I, it's existing. So I, I think that's, uh, uh, you know, I think the board thinks it's important and continue to do that.
What does the Department of Social Services do for those kind of people that you get?
I'm not sure. I, they, they came and presented at the board meeting in Antioch Lago and they were talking mainly about, uh, federal programs that they implement and nothing that I heard was regarding taxes.
Yeah, they.
Heating and cooling and food and.
Right, I see, okay.
They provide, they basically provide income and it's left to the homeowner paying taxes before, if they're public. The, the state role really is, for example, the farmland preservation or stuff like that. They, the, the, in many cases in ISO, Virginia is also the case. Farmland is taxed at a much lower rate, residential or commercial. Um, and so that's typically where the state gets big money. And then again, cash assistance for the poor, uh, without necessarily focusing on tax protection.
I think Dominion has a, also has a program.
Um, so we can leave it the way it was, that, I mean, this doesn't sound terribly onerous. Question for Todd to go down to the last section, that, that, that is, so I raised this in a conversation for.
You want to keep on going?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. So surplus property, you recall a couple of years ago, uh, we talked about that, we came up with a list and, uh, it's not mentioned in here. I thought it would be worthwhile to add because the sport of surprises is actually taking action. As you recall, we reviewed twenty-seven pieces of property and identified four of them for further consideration. One of them apparently is being sold now actively. I don't know the stats of that one. And then the Hampton Hall Road is surplus property and we're now doing something with it. Uh, so I mentioned, I called those, uh, things out there. There's also, which fell down to the very end, and I mentioned the, the big one in the bunch was the, uh, ore farm. So the recommendation, the county economic development commission should evaluate the former ore farm property to determine if it's historical or potential recreational value sufficient to justify further development as a tourism asset. That is a unilateral recommendation from John, like it or not, whatever you want to.
Where is that? Where is that?
It's up down La Grove.
Down La Grove, where the M P R station, uh, radio tower is.
Is that where that old, old, old fox home used to be?
Yes.
With the graves somewhere?
Somewhere, that, that's what the historical society people told me. And anything we do, in my personal opinion, we would need to do an archaeological survey so that we don't build anything over something that's important. And of course, archaeological surveys take money, uh, but there is history there. I walked, I walked it and, uh, of course, it was hot as heck, the eighties. There's some tin, like roof tin, uh, there and there's bottles. Now, whether that's somebody that dumped it twenty years ago and just looks old, you know, I, I don't know. And I'm not even sure whether, I, I've been told it's on the left side of the road, but we found artifacts or detritus on the right side of the road.
Study alone would be costly.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it's, uh, the, the portion that's being farmed, uh, I, I don't know if it has an archaeological value or not, I doubt it. I, in the woods, I think around there, it's where, where there would be artifacts. But it is history and, um, I don't know, I think I've told you all of this before, but the the Lancaster, uh, poor tract is now the, uh, Audubon Trail.
Right.
Um, Hickory Hollow, Hickory Hollow. They, they also found a rare and endangered plant there that helped that happen. But that was Lancaster's poor tract and I'm not sure where Richmond or Westmoreland's poor, poor house tract is, but all the counties back in the day had, had that.
And if I remember, when we went over all of those properties. They were in such an awkward position, you couldn't do anything with them.
Well, I mean, they're pretty isolated, uh, they're, uh, in the center of the county and, uh, uh, you know, miles from, uh, any store or anything of that.
Yeah, it, it's, it's like recommending new beaches and stuff where.
But I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not putting a comment on it. You, you could do one of those and then rezone the area around there and create a mixed-use development. That it has its own convenience store in, in the, in the development. Yeah. Uh, hiking trails.
Not say we have to do it.
Right.
Let's look in. And I don't think we're the ones that have to do.
It's, it's a historical asset.
Right. I will say the historical society has members that feel huge, very strongly about this particular piece of land. And mostly it's historical potential. Uh, they haven't found anything particularly noteworthy up to now. But there's thought that this would be a likely place to find something. So if you were going to get into the
going down by the old high school.
You, you know what? You see the radio tower, drive down Dollar Road, look for the radio tower, it's on the right-hand side if you're coming. I mean, left-hand side, I'm sorry.
You will get a lot of interference from this, the historical society. And maybe just some members, but they'll be, they will be very vocal about the historic wonders of the
Would it, would it kind of depend on what you were proposing to do with it? I mean, there might be some things that might be in favor. I don't know what that would be.
What I, the feeling I got from talking to them is they don't want to touch it.
It's not doing anybody any good as it is.
It's, a good portion of that is also swampy, isn't it?
Yeah. And the, the only thing we know now is that it's currently paper where it is. Outside of that, there's, unless you go out and actually look for artifacts that might be their foundations and such. If, if nobody wants to touch it, then it falls to history.
It's one of those, uh, sort of NIMBY issues. And they consider that their backyard. But we could add them to the list with E D C.
Well, one, one of the ladies, when I was over there talking, said, you want, you want me to go out and try to find the graves? And she was a little bit overweight and was not walking that great. And I was just gonna imagine her out in the field and it was, it was in the middle of summer. I'm like, well, no, we'll, we'll get back with you if you want to. But, uh, uh, they're, they're convinced there are, uh, great cemetery and graves in that site. Uh, in addition to the historic stuff, but there are three articles in, in the historic newsletter that, that, that starts in the beginning and they, they actually shut it down for a while because they didn't think it was an efficient use of funds. And then just started giving direct payments to people. And then they revived it again for like twenty, thirty more years and started again and then ultimately shut it down. And then the caretaker that was running the farm and overseeing it ended up buying it from the county. And then it became an apartment complex for a while.
So there's actually a, a house on there?
No, not now. There's, there's, there may be a foundation. It's just, like I said, just, just, uh, tin and things like that.
So this is the largest tract of land we investigated. There might be historical value, there might be hiking value, there is clearly agricultural value. Let's not just keep it, let's let somebody other than us examine the opportunity. That's all this says.
And the county does not have a recreation department in, what do they?
No, the, uh, allocation that the board supervisors gives to the Y M C A is quoted there, rec- recreation. I mean, that's, that fulfills recreation needs, so.
Plus the park behind the library right now.
And the colors are beautiful.
And, and Rusty Backstop at Shell Land. You did? I would love to have Inter Bureau of Sports out there. That'd be just great.
By the way, we did that after they closed the grounds to Reed Bill's school, playing baseball. And he didn't want him by playing because his insurance would go up. So the county let us.
Well, moving right along, is that the, isn't that the end of?
That's the end of chapter four.
I, once again, we'll make a lot into a group of ads, right?
There's a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was, other than the preamble, which can't find command, one more go and make sure we have that the right version.
I, I can, chance I can download from the web, from the internet, from mail. But I don't know where it's gonna take, but, um.
Any questions?
He's looking right now. So what's gonna happen next with the three chapters we've approved and hopefully the. Looking right now. So what's gonna happen next with the three chapters we approved and hopefully the preamble? All of those changes you saw and read will become incorporated. It will become version three and ultimately that's getting a lot closer to final approval. Uh, we'll probably keep version two handy because it will show the major differences. So potentially a decent presentation of the board of supervisors, if they care to look at it as to what changed from year to year.
Right.
But that they will not, the the changes will not be presented for reading. They will be incorporated. They will not be obvious. Uh, in the old, in the current version of the document and the old version, if you ever looked at the very back, there was a list of all of the historical sites. It was part of appendix A for some reason. Um, I would propose keeping that as the new appendix B. At this point, uh, there are no changes proposed to it, so. Without the large bulk of stuff that has to be done. With the um goals, objectives and strategy formerly chapter two mounted the appendix B. There's a few typos and things that need to be fixed formatting issues. But that's gonna change again by figuring additional recommendations that have been made.
Awesome.
So this is, when I I went through, I typed in your email and I went through and this is to everybody. Uh, it's JK V three doc and that's what I have right here, JK three.
So this was a new paragraph that was that this is the only part that was added to what was in appendix A before. To recall, appendix A was quite long and had all kinds of demographic stuff that we could drop. It's not date or to replicate. So as a rhetorical uh device, I added this paragraph. This, again, the preamble is mostly talking about history up to this point. There needed to be a bridge to so what? And so we talked about the demographics affects pro spread and people in the county enjoy the tranquility of the area and do not want to paint generally their retiree or not full time resident. Therefore, generally not persons directly affected by the absence of employment opportunity. On the other hand, much of the working age population and those who lay children would like to have more growth, both for their own career opportunities, but also for fear their children will go off to college and no have and have no career opportunities. A faction ironically is the retirees in the first group who require them more public service maintained for health and are often therefore need if not want more global service by this dichotomy has profoundly impacted the social problem. How the county grows or not. Nothing controversializing in that statement.
It seems a fair statement of the problem we're facing now. I thought so. With that in mind, move that we approve the preamble as amended.
Put up the problem, but you didn't put the answer.
Oh, forget it. Give me another week that.
All right. And and that's kind of true of a lot of things where we want access to the water for the public. We want beaches. We want all that. There's, and we list them all, but we don't have any solution to any of this. What are we gonna do as a planning company? Make those things become a reality.
Was your motion seconded? No, it was not.
Well, uh.
It has to have a second before we get it.
Well, you seconded the other one.
I second. Your turn.
Roger, second question. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Uh, I just wanted to mention, um, I think this was three years ago, maybe four. We were discussing um swimming and there was some discussion about the end of Fleeton Road. I don't know if y'all were there or not. Well, a week after that, I got a call from somebody that happened to live on the end of Fleeton Road. And said, you can't swim here. It's terrible for swimming. There's rays everywhere. You can't walk a foot and go step on a stingray and get a barb in your foot. So I'm just letting you know that NIMBY and locally underwater line uses and NIMBYs are allowing well and uh, get, I mean, I I would love to have a beach, but you know, we have jellyfish too. So we got two things, jellyfish and NIMBY. And uh, not saying that that they do make jellyfish nets. In fact, the old Whitestone Beach, I don't know if y'all knew history yet, but the old Whitestone Beach down there had jelly jellyfish nets around it. Uh, so that's an option too. So, but uh, I I just wanted to, that there will, Mr. Brian has said this before, that there probably a pushback.
The end of Fleet.
It it's all residential and right off of Fleet Road there, right? Just to the south of Fleet Point, there's a big bar, sandbar. And it probably go up to your waist. And you go a quarter mile offshore, you're still up to your waist.
Okay.
And in the summertime, when it's pretty, you'll have fifteen, twenty five boats out there, kids and all on people waiting around. There are boats that anchor.
But you can't access that.
You can't get there from the shoreline, so you have to come somewhere else and drop your anchor there. And it's a real nice soft sand there. Escapes, escapes everywhere.
Yeah.
How about the end of Fairport where the old factory?
If you go south of that, that's that's the property that I was hoping that could something be done with that one day. Uh, it's a nice bar. You you can go out a long ways in shallow water. So in the summertime, the water's real warm because it's not very deep.
Right.
Uh, it's a good place for kids to go to be trained in that area.
So who did, who inherited the piece that the fish factory?
Uh, I think that's still uh, Adita Humphreys.
And and the Humphreys family.
Yeah.
And where's that, where's your piece that you're talking about relative to the factory property?
So if you come down south of the factory and you you kind of go along the shoreline heading up the white column, it's that piece on the right there.
I got it.
It's a few houses there now, but it's still.
All right, Scott, anything else?
Um, so just to wrap up, uh, thank you. Uh, this is great. Uh, we will do in our next meeting. And before that, you'll be getting chapter three, uh, which will look a lot like, uh, look a lot like chapter two. Uh, except it's about waters that are dirt and then you'll at some point getting a beginning chapter or the new appendix B, uh, appendix A as well. And that those two will be discussed in our next meeting. Um, after that, we just make the changes, repaginate the table of contents and reformat. I think box is fit, not screw stuff up. So do final review on final um, public hearing then final approval.
Do you combine chapter five with something else?
Chapter five uh was chapter four. What was chapter? What was chapter five is now chapter four.
Okay, that's what I asked.
No, there was no chapter five.
What was chapter five is now chapter three.
Were you purposely trying to confuse us?
No, he asked the question, so it's up to blame him, not me.
Where did chapter two, the old chapter two end up?
Chapter two will become appendix A.
Okay.
Yeah, and you'll get that the next meeting or sooner, much sooner. Um, we need to talk about future dates then, so I know that's happening. June meeting, I cannot be here. Our scheduled date is July. I only have one of part of a week, the gap in July, which I think will be the final approval. Uh, so therefore I'm gonna request that the meeting for the the July meeting of due July twenty second back, or I should say back to July twenty second.
Is that our original meeting date?
No, it's the original meeting date was July seventeen.
Okay, and July twenty two.
The Tuesday.
It's the Tuesday, okay.
I cannot be here at the point.
And I cannot be there on the twenty second. I made my ready vacation plans around being here on the seventeen, so.
Anyway, so we need to deal with the the.
Okay, let's talk about June first of all. June is, uh, next Thursday is a holiday. And um, we need to move that to possibly the next Tuesday or stupid, what do you think?
Well, um, I had wanted to do it uh on a date that the economic development commission.
You had a magic calendar.
Yeah, I did. And there it is. Uh, so we can meet, uh, I prefer, you all tell me, but I prefer not to meet on the sixteenth and twentieth, Monday or Friday. We can meet the eighteenth or you can move it to the next week. I'm not available the twenty sixth. But any other day, if you want to do the next week or, uh, but the seventeenth is out because.
Does anybody have any objections to the eighteenth, June eighteen?
Much preferred.
Good for me.
Wednesday, June eighteen will be the next meeting, unless y'all wanna, you wanna vote on that.
No objecting. Anybody object to June eighteen? Okay, let's go with that.
Okay.
And then July is currently scheduled for July seventeen. I would propose with with all humility and homeowners agree to move that to July twenty second. It was hiding, hiding. I can fall in.
No, I can't. Specifically named that week work because of our planning commission on the seventeenth, but I mean, that's fine.
Okay, you are off that whole week.
I mean, that that that's correct. I will not do that.
Okay, the whole week of the eighteenth.
No, I I can do that the week that the planning commission was supposed to be.
Yeah.
That's what we were supposed to, but.
I can't do the twenty, anything that twenty first through the twenty fifth.
John got July seventeen.
Well, that is a regular meeting.
That is current date, which doesn't work.
I'm I'm out of the time.
Eighteen? That week, I can't do that week or the week prior.
Any suggestions to it?
So, uh, okay, so.
Well, the twenty second is also economic development issue.
Then be. Got the thirty first. Twenty second is fourth, fourth due.
Uh, I'm ready.
John got that week and that's it.
That's it.
It for me, that week of July and only the first three days of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was reading, uh, the way the numbers are, it looks like uh, it was on a twenty second, but it's a fifteen. Uh, whatever y'all would like to do. Twenty second, I mean, it's okay with me if it's okay with y'all.
Move, we move, reschedule till the twenty second. Sorry, I.
Don't bother me. I just wanna have it understood that I did try to schedule around our regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you and thank you. Uh, July twenty second.
I'll teach it.
July twenty second.
No.
Mr. Brian motioned for July twenty second.
Twenty second.
I second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye, okay.
So I I will contact county administration. They will set up Zoom meetings for uh, the eight, June eighteenth, Wednesday, June eighteenth and Tuesday, July twenty second.
And it's likely until July twenty second, it would be the public hearing on this. But we'll see, we'll make sure that one minute for the seventeen.
Okay. Well, we all speak the dates.
I think so.
Still a question to you. Uh, North, Northumberland County has a strategic plan. Does Northumberland County have a strategic plan?
Not that I am aware of.
See, because I don't think the company.
The Economic Development Commission is working on strategic plan.
Economic Development is working on a strategic plan.
Economic Development is.
Okay.
And the strategic plan, I guess the county is the capital improvement plan. I mean, if you wanna.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so how far has the economic development team got?
I'll be honest with you, without this document, we're kind of out of stance. Reason I say that is because this document is somewhat directional to the EDC in nature. So we we don't want to create suggestions, goals or otherwise that would be in direct conflict with this document.
Okay, okay.
Uh, but you've seen this now. You've got copies of everything that we've got.
I have the the red line draft that I was gonna share with you.
Yeah. Well, and one of the reasons why I brought that up is because um, people get bogged down with the company as a plan. They get bogged down, they don't move. And the county is planning, try to overdo it by doing the CIP uh thing. And a strategic plan is a little more organized. A strategic plan is a little more directional. And it's a little more intentional.
Action oriented.
Right, it really is action oriented and um, it probably wouldn't hurt the county to have a strategic plan for the next twenty years. That that's the way things seem to move with.
Which I might add is with Lancaster County.
Right. I I just, I just, I sat in on one of their their sessions and I understand why they did the way they're doing it. By the way, they did it, they have a document now. And they can uh, and when they they can approach that document and say, this is what we say we're gonna do in five years. And they address, they addressed all the things that uh, that we've been talking about. Whether it's housing, whether it's recreation, whether it's youth, um, young, I mean, employment for the area. Um, because one of the things that we do is we plan and we don't plan at the same time. And you stay where you are, because you don't. And you have got to have a concrete plan to move forward. Um, and until you do that, the CIP is nice, that's gonna be a subset of your, of your strategic plan. Because uh, otherwise the taxes are gonna continue to go up. Otherwise, your taxes are gonna continue to be your baseline. And I'm just saying, I think, I just think that um, it probably would would be nice if the board of supervisors said, we're gonna do a strategic plan, because that's gonna be part of it.
So you're talking more action plan.
More of an action thing. You gotta have some action.
Who's gonna put that together?
The county needs to.
That fault on us?
The county, no. As far as the planning commission, but the county needs to put folks that are serious about a strategic plan.
It also needs to figure out how much money it was associated with. And I think part of the legend right now is to figure out, how do we get what they're control, they seem to be moving in the right direction. As we discussed in our last meeting, talking about CIP, money is there even for what we aim, even the virgin spending.
Right.
So if we're gonna do discretionary stuff, it's making it happen, there's gotta be money right now.
But you gotta have that broad picture saying, what do you want? Do you want? Um, what's the.
That's your goal.
Yeah, uh, instead of basket, well, basketball courts or whatever, pickleball. Uh, some of us are not too old to at least move a little bit to do pickleball. And uh, and that's a recreation activity because Heesfield, let's face it, Heesfield is not incorporated. Heesfield is just Heesfield, you know, and uh.
Just it.
Just Hees, Hees, just Heesfield. And that ought to be the center of your county. Because any given time during the day, fifty to sixty percent of your population is right here. But we don't plan it. No, we don't have the.
Uh, I can figure out, there is no really governing body for village, Heesfield.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Can't even put up Christmas lights and decorations.
It makes it, if you uh have some sort of township state as state, it makes it a lot easier to get grant money. But you can't get a village, uh, yeah, unless you, unless you're a town.
So you you gotta, you gotta plan it. And that's why I mentioned strategic plan. And um, it, because I I, most counties are growing. See, because right now we're nothing but a bedroom community to kill them. And.
Which is growing.
Yeah. Yeah, we 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 are, I mean, you know, want something. And you've continued to drain your resources because I'm gonna take my dinner money.
Well, if you look at Lancaster County, their court system is up in Lancaster, but the main business hub is in Kilmarne. They're not hardly even connected.
Not, it's the town of Kilmarne and the county of Lancaster.
Right, yeah.
The growth area of Lancaster County in the triangle of Irvington, O'Marne and Whitestone. That's the growth area. Instead of villages, they have that interior growth area.
And it's time for Northumberland to do its own thing. You know, uh, because what's changing in our society and you don't realize it is that um, what companies are doing now is they are not replacing retiring and leaving workers. They they they, AI is here. And what are you gonna do ten years from now, twenty years from now, when there are no? And what are you gonna do ten years from now, twenty years from now, when there are no jobs to be had? And that's the type of thing that we're gonna be faced with in the next, run the next year, two years. Uh, people aren't replacing people, they're bringing in machines, so.
Which creates another body of workers, but they're high tech. And I don't know if we're preparing our kids for that at all.
No, but see, AI, you don't need, you don't need, you don't, you don't need, you don't need people.
Do you think that the simple.
It's not a software by the way. Yeah, AI can't fix a car.
No, I, I, AI can't fix itself for the moment.
You have a checkup.
Okay, Stuart, come through.
Um, thank you all for going along.
Thank you for all your time.
But we're, we're, we're getting there, we're making very rapid progress.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alright. Okay, thanks everybody, good job.